Meeting agenda, wanted to walk the council and the community through sort of three key topics. Rick Gonzales Park and the topic and interest around whether the park could be a potential opportunity to help expansion of the Spring Lake Elementary School, as well as the topic around Spring Lake's contribution to the sports park facility along East Street. And then I'll close out with some background information regarding the second aquatic facility that the city is working towards. So let me start first with a topic of Rick Gonzales Park and provide a little bit of context for the Spring Lake specific plan relative to that park. For those, you know, council members and residents that are familiar with the Spring Lake specific plan, that specific plan was adopted in 2001. And some of the key principles in that specific plan included creating sub neighborhoods. There were organized around eight acre neighborhood parks that had a two acre commercial property next to them, as well as an adjacent elementary school campus. What you see up here on the screen now is a result of last 20 years of evolution of that specific plan over time. Some of the school sites have been given up by the school district, the commercial sites due to changing market conditions and economies have been converted from a commercial site to residential in some cases. And then in the context of the Rick Gonzales Park, ultimately that two acre commercial site was integrated into the park. Also shown on this map is a four acre Spring Lake Central Park. So that was the the third component of sort of the sub neighborhood focal point in Spring Lake. In addition to what you see on this plan, and I will talk later this evening, the Spring Lake specific plan had a park obligation that included athletic fields geared primarily towards youth in the community. And that came in the form of the sports park obligation, which I'll address later. So the Rick Gonzales Park was referred to in the specific plan as Park N3. And as it shows here, back in 2014, the specific plan still had that eight acre park planned. It was not yet improved. In fact, Rick Gonzales, or sorry, Jack Slaven Park was the only park at that time that had park improvements constructed. And after the recession, we were starting to see home building return. And as a result, received some interest from developments and actually the property owners of this property to consider rezoning that neighborhood commercial, that NC parcel there to something other than commercial. Ultimately, after receiving that application and engaging with the community, we looked at a variety of different sort of site plan opportunities that tried to integrate housing instead of commercial on this 10 acre parcel. What you see here is just one concept plan that took that two acre commercial site and converted it to a one acre residential, single family home parcel and added an acre to the park at the time. Ultimately, after receiving public input, what the council ended up doing was negotiating with that landowner to acquire the entire 10 acre parcel, make that part of the Spring Lake Park financing plan and worked with the neighborhood to develop a master plan for it several years later. As part of that process, one of the comments and questions that we were getting from the community at the time was, you know, Jack Slaven Park was the only park amenity. When are we going to receive the next increment of park amenity and completion of green belts? And the neighborhood was starting to build out again. And the way the financing plan for Spring Lake Parks was set up was the developers, the home builders would pay park fees at the time that they pull their building permits. The city would collect and retain those fees. And at the time that we had sufficient funding to acquire the parkland, we would go out and purchase that parkland. After the parkland was purchased, they would, we would then wait for enough revenue to be accumulated to actually do the improvements. The, the land costs, as well as the improvement costs were actually part of that fee and built into the fee paid by the developers. So those are not paid by the residents directly. Those were sort of built into the cost of the home as part of the developer's cost. But in an effort to try to deliver the park improvements out in Spring Lake on a shorter timeframe, well, we ended up negotiating as part of the Rick Gonzales Park, as well as the Spring Lake Park, was a financing agreement that allowed the city to acquire the site, lock in a purchase price, adjust the, the park fee that developers were paying to reflect that, that purchase price and the financing. And instead of putting all the money initially towards the land purchase, we were then able to accumulate the park fees to go towards improvements. And ultimately, what that resulted in was delivering the parks two to three years earlier than would have otherwise materialized. So what you see on the screen here is the master plan that was ultimately approved for the entire 10 acre Rick Gonzales Park site, not having sufficient funds to build out the entire park at the time. The council opted to do the initial phase and the improvements, which you see here and not shaded out. So that was the, the seven acres roughly that was first built and is on the ground today with the, the yellow area that you see there shaded for the second phase. And the reason we did not build out the entire park, not only was it, we didn't have sufficient funds to build this part completely, but what we wanted to do since Spring Lake Park and the neighborhood around it was starting to develop out as well, we wanted to make sure that both neighborhoods were starting to receive park amenities as they were being built out and not put all the funds towards, towards one neighborhood while the other one had to sit and wait for the revenues to accumulate. So that was kind of the principle behind where we were at in 2018. And as you can see on this master plan, the, the future phases of the park contemplated incorporating a parking lot, tennis courts, basketball court, as well as additional turf land. Immediately to the south of Rick Gonzales Park, as we know, is the Spring Lake Elementary School Site. And almost simultaneously, as we were going through this process, the district was going through the process to develop a master plan for construction of that Spring Lake Elementary School Site, which is now partially complete. So fast forward to 2021, we've all seen, of course, substantial development pattern and, and home building out in Spring Lake. And as a result, we were able to pay off the financing costs and purchase price for Rick Gonzales Park, Spring Lake Park. And we were projecting based on development expectations to have sufficient revenue come 2022 to actually move forward and construct the completed improvements at Rick Gonzales Spring Lake, as well as Jack Slaven, which had about an acre of unimproved land left. So we initiated a public process with the residents to kind of revet the master plans for each of these parks. A lot of new residents, of course, had moved in that were not participating in the original master planning process. And so we went back out to the community over the course of the summer and asked them to provide feedback and input on the master plans that were initially prepared for these three parks. We also asked for input on future amenities that they would like to see integrated with Spring Lake Central Park. There is no master plan yet developed for that one, but we wanted to at least understand kind of what the neighborhood desires were for certain types of amenities so that we could properly balance those throughout Spring Lake. So what you see here is an updated master plan that integrates the feedback that we received from residents over the course of the summer. What we also heard was during that timeframe was the district was getting some questions from the neighborhood regarding enrollment capacity at Spring Lake Elementary School. And almost concurrently, again, they had a, a public process where they heard substantial feedback from, from neighborhood residents regarding desire to figure out how to accommodate additional students in Spring Lake so that their, their kids as they're growing up in Spring Lake can be able to go to a neighborhood school. So the district approached the city as we were nearing the end of our public process and asked if we would contemplate potential use of a portion of Rick Gonzales Park to allow them to expand, expand Spring Lake Elementary School and able to, to also satisfy the sport court and sport field needs that they have with the additional student capacity that they would like to accommodate. There was a, you know, a series of closed session items that showed up both on the city council, as well as the school district. And I think that generated some, some concern and interest, of course, from the community about, you know, what, what discussions are occurring. No decisions, of course, were being made. What was simply being asked is, is there an interest to explore the potential of mutual benefit in this? Ultimately, in October, with the other specific, or the master plans for the two other parks, we presented what you see here, which is an updated master plan for Rick Gonzales Park, which shows a shaded area for potential expansion of the school site, should that option prove out to be desirable. It was not a proposal to move forward with sale or lease or disposal of this property to the school district, but simply do we want to set aside and reserve this area to allow that, that discussion to, to play out? But at the same time, recognizing that we had improvements to the park that we could move forward with, that would not be slowed down by, by those discussions. And so the areas on the, the left-hand side and the right-hand side of Rick Gonzales Park there that are dashed lines would, the recommendation was to move forward with those concurrently with the improvement plans for the other two parks in Spring Lake. And ultimately, what council's direction was to staff was to defer action on this updated master plan, given the concern and feedback being voiced by, by residents in Spring Lake, and asked us to, to go out and kind of re-engage with, with the neighbors and clarify, you know, what, what the intentions were of the city around this, have conversations with the district around what their, their true needs are in terms of needing to expand capacity at that school. So fast forward, that is really at the point in time where we are this evening to, to really present to the community, you know, sort of the context and the background to the master plan for Rick Gonzales Park and the recommendation before the council back in October. And we'll take this additional feedback this evening and that we've received over the last several weeks and continue to sort of use that to inform path to move forward. So again, I do want to reiterate, right? There's been no measures or action taken to commit to dispose of this portion of Rick Gonzales Park. And the intention for this proposed master plan was simply to reserve the opportunity for us to, to vet out that concept. So that concludes the section on Rick Gonzales Park. We'll transition now to the community center and sports park. And what you see here is also summarized in the staff report. So the, the Spring Lake specific plan had a park obligation and the, the park obligation is informed by, you know, a couple of things. One, the state has a standard that says all new residential development must provide parkland as part of the development process. That state standard has a minimum of 3.5 acres per 1,000 population. Many cities, including the city of Woodlands, have a higher standard than that 3.5 in Woodlands. Currently has a five acre per thousand, and that is consistent with what was ultimately required as part of the Spring Lake specific plan. And then the breakdown of that park requirements, you know, kind of varies by community, but in, in Woodland here, you know, we, we cherish not just our neighborhood parks, which we have a great heritage for parks in our neighborhoods, but we also have, you know, a great sort of youth, athletic, you know, culture in our community. And so as part of that, the specific plan and the parks master plan at the time that the specific plan was adopted called for a portion of that 56.39 acre total requirement there in the form of sports fields. And so the, the 56.39 is a five acre per thousand standard. And again, broken down, as you see here with the, the three neighborhood parks, 24 acres, the four acre Central Park, and then 28.39 acres in the form of sports fields for primarily for youth recreation, but not exclusively. And then not shown on here, but also talked about in the specific plan and the city's parks master plan at the time was a community park as well as a regional park. The regional park is that 160 acre former landfill property on the east side of 102, just southeast of the specific plan area. That is a park that the city is pursuing, but is not part of the park requirement for Spring Lake. And parks fees from Spring Lake do not go to, to improve that facility. Similarly, the, the community park that is identified on the specific plan is a separate obligation that the city is pursuing, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail here. Those that are familiar with the Spring Lake specific plan have probably run across this exhibit. So this exhibit in the specific plan highlights where all of the park facilities in Spring Lake, as well as contemplation for what is referred to as the master plan remainder area. So that next phase of development that would happen after build out of Spring Lake was master planned partially for all the infrastructure backbone utilities to, to be contemplated, but also to provide a picture of kind of the full build out of the southeast area. So in this exhibit, again, you can see the concept around these three neighborhood parks, the commercial centers, the Central Park concept for the sports park at the time would be that it would be located in kind of that next increment, that next phase of the master plan remainder area shown here. So it's actually outside of the Spring Lake specific plan area, but identified as a 34 acre sports complex that would serve not just Spring Lake, but of course, the entire community. And it talks about intentionally locating that facility between the community center over here off of East Street and the regional park at the southeast corner. And then the, the lines that you see here are sort of the key arterial roadway segments, as well as the green belt connectors to demonstrate how they would be integrated and connected. Ultimately, in 2005, I believe it was, the city council approved acquisition of an 80 acre piece of property along East Street where the community center is currently located. City had a willing seller of land at that time, sufficient to build a community center, but also additional land that the city contemplated and ultimately decided to combine the sports field requirement for Spring Lake, as well as future development in the community, all in one location on this 80 acre piece of property. So what you see here is the 2006 master plan that was adopted for the combined community center, community park and sports park facility across that 80 acres. In that master plan, what you see is the community center, the sports park, tennis courts, baseball softball complex, soccer fields, a lake, along with a restaurant and docks, as well as soccer fields. In 2005, the city built the community center. So this graphic here shows an updated version of the master plan with the areas that are kind of grayed out as the areas that have already been improved to the 50,000 square foot community center, as well as a dog park, parking, associated parking and sports fields that you see grayed out here were built over a period of 2006 to 2008. The community center was constructed with bonds that the city issued that were repaid or still being repaid actually through sales tax, as well as citywide impact fees, as well as gifts that the city received towards the construction of the project. The sports field piece was built separately and in part with fees from Spring Lake. 41% of the construction cost for those fields came from Spring Lake Park fees that had been paid. And then the, the balance, again, there's one field that was constructed with, with city fees as part of that initial sports park phase. And then on this master plan, which was updated in 2018, there's been some modifications and changes that have been reflected on here. Many of the amenities more or less stay the same, with the exception of kind of where they're placed on the site. The tennis complex still shows at the corner, sports park and East Street, two additional soccer fields, as well as a girls' fast pitch softball complex has been integrated into the, the south side of the site. There's also additional parking and a future skate park identified along Sports Park Drive. And then this remaining area on the east side of the property would be a kind of a third and final phase, which would come after additional storm drain improvements were needed for the completion of the build out of the southeast area. So that would be a drainage facility. The dirt from this site would then be used to help build the, the over crossing for parkland over crossing, which would save substantial cost. So the Spring Lake obligation then towards the, the sports fields, you know, came out of the, the city's requirement, general plan policy for five acres per thousand. And again, to provide the, the impact from new growth in the Spring Lake area on athletic facility needs in our community. The, similar to the, the neighborhood parks, the city, you know, has a policy that all new development kind of pay its, its way forward. And a lot of that is a result of, of changing property tax laws and policies in the state of California dating all the way back to Prop 13. And really, at the end of the day, the property tax share that the city receives is insufficient to cover the city's service costs, including police and fire, library and whatnot. And so very common throughout California and other states in the United States, the use of CFDs and landscaping lighting assessment districts are used to help pay that, that gap and that incremental cost for new development. Cause the alternative would be that you lower the, the service level standard and you take these amenities out of new development, which ultimately, as we know, would result in a community that's less desirable to live in. So the sports park CFD that does show up on the Spring Lake residents' tax bill is very similar to the, the L and L that they pay for the maintenance of the landscaping and lighting assessment districts for Spring Lake. It just goes to pay for specifically the sport field maintenance at the community and senior center sports park complex. The CFD is not the only contributor towards the maintenance of those fields. The city, just last year, about this time, completed a complete renovation to the turf fields. That renovation replacement of that turf was funded entirely by city sales tax dollars. Additionally, the city covers the cost, the maintenance cost for all the parking that serves the sports fields, as well as the lighting. So there's certainly a substantial share of, of the cost that goes towards that facility that comes from non-Spring Lake CFD funding. And as the council recalls on, on Tuesday, Tuesday night, we approved annexation of a new residential development just north of this site into that CFD so that they would also pay their fair share towards the maintenance of the sports fields. So those additional 183 housing units will help defray the cost, the maintenance of those, those fields going forward. Similarly, when new development like the tech park and the balance of the remainder areas built out will also contribute. And all of that will help buffer any increases to the sports park CFD maintenance that the residents pay. All right. So that brings us to the final topic, the new aquatics facility. With the closure of Gracie Hiddleston Pool back in 2008, again, after the recession, the city conducted a feasibility assessment to rehab that pool complex, Hiddleston Pool, and ultimately determined that the, the cost to repair it was not worth the investment, given its inadequate size for future growth. I think council also recognized it's probably not the best location, contemplating future sort of build out of, of the community more towards the southeast and wanting to balance dispersing pool facilities, public pool facilities throughout the community. The city conducted a pool feasibility study in 2017. The conclusion of that feasibility study, the preferred location and site that's shown here just south of Pioneer High School was identified as a preference to see if we could, you know, partner with the district to develop a two to two and a half acre pool complex that could be jointly used by Pioneer High School students as part of their aquatic program, as well as the public, similar to the Brooks Pool Complex, where that is a shared complex between the city and the school district, and also located in a way where it's proximate to, you know, the, the new growth pattern within the community. The city negotiated a joint use agreement with the district as part of the Willow Springs School Site, which is a former school site that had been shut down and abandoned. The city acquired that property as part of that negotiation, secured joint use agreement, giving us the ability to pursue funding and construction of a project just south of Pioneer High School for that joint news pool. What you see here is the concept plan that was developed as part of that feasibility study and it's now had been updated this past year. The council reemphasized its commitment to prioritize this facility as a council priority goal and action. And in that has identified additional funding from Measure J to, to go towards the ultimate construction of it. So the pool complex concept, as you see here, is, you know, a 10 lane lap pool with eight lanes of competitive swim, combined with a more recreational and sort of shared use pool, along with, you know, traditional pool buildings and, and locker rooms and whatnot. And so the updated cost estimate for this project, we'll get to you next, shows that to deliver this, this concept in today's construction environments, has now been updated to a $10 million project. And the council received a preliminary sort of funding strategy. If the council wanted to prioritize and get this project built as soon as possible, what we outlined back in the summer was preliminary funding strategy that identified the 1.75 million of existing and remaining Measure J allocation. The $250,000 that we paid to the school district to secure the right for that joint use agreement was also paid out of that Measure J. So ultimately, there's been 2 million committed from the city already. We have development agreements that have supplemental payments from developments. So as new units are built, we tacked on a, an additional community benefit payment to help pay for community amenities like a pool project. So what we've identified is ultimately, we anticipate around $3.9 million in development agreement payments. And by 2023, based on current housing permit starts, we anticipate maybe having around 3 million from development agreements. And then the Spring Lake Parks, Sports Park Phase Two. So at full build outs of Spring Lake, ultimately, the current park fee for Spring Lake does contemplate a final phase of the sports park and the remaining 10 acres that need to be built there. And so that 3.735 is the amount that we anticipate to collect in developer fees towards parks for Spring Lake and specifically identified right now for the sports park. There's a opportunity for us, you know, should the council and the community desire to re-prioritize that funding to go towards helping to deliver the pool project sooner. So what you see here is potential identifying that funding source with, you know, the understanding that we would not prioritize this funding to go towards either the sports park or a pool before the neighborhood parks in the Spring Lake Central Park had been completed. So they would be the last dollars in and after those parks had been completed. So there's a, a question before the council and the community as to if, if the pool is a priority, we could reallocate and re-prioritize that funding towards the pool. If that were to happen, ultimately, the, the city would take on the obligation to secure the funding to complete the final phase of the sports park. So it would not assume that the city would just reduce the size of the sports park. We still fulfill that obligation. And then lastly, in the funding strategy recognizes the potential that we do have people in the community that would like to support a project like this. So we've identified the potential for a million dollars to come from fundraising from local donors towards the project. So ultimately, this, this, you know, funding framework, as you see here, would be sufficient for us to complete the pool based on current cost projections. There would need to be, as you see here, based on a timing standpoint, some consideration for internal borrowing. some consideration for internal borrowing to allow the project to be fully funded and built sooner and then repayment over time as those development agreement payments came in, as well as the park fees from Spring Lake got built out. So that concludes my presentation on these topics this evening. I do look forward to any questions from the council or the community. You know, we understand a lot of this stuff is is very complicated and integrated in ways that may not be intuitive, but, you know, we do want to convey to the public that we're we're doing our best to try to deliver these amenities in the most efficient and responsible way as possible. And we welcome the feedback from the community on how best to do that. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, City Manager Hyde. I appreciate that. Thank you for that thorough overview. I'll open it up to my council colleagues. Do you have any questions for City Manager on the presentation? No, Ricky, was that, did you raise a hand?
No, I was just adjusting my screen.
Okay, sorry about that.
I always have questions, but I'll hold off.
Okay, okay, thank you. While in the spirit of of this meeting and listening to our community, I'm gonna open it up to listen to public comments. So, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that have their hands raised?
Yes, I I see three members raising their hand, or actually four or five. Yeah, hands are going up.
Okay, okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. Jenna, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Excellent. As a member of the community, I am adamantly opposed to the Rick taking of acreage of the Rick Gonzales Park. I think there needs to be a more cohesive plan going forward for the school element instead of these Band-Aid fixes. I know that a lot of that falls on the school board and not necessarily the city council, but I would again, say I'm adamantly opposed. When it comes to the pool and we look at the sports park where it takes up more than half of the acreage and for the last two decades, that is inaccessible to Spring Lake residents as all of our children would have to cross through those county roads with no walking paths or pedestrian paths and over a freeway. That is not technically, I know that you guys annexed it to be Spring Lake, but it is not part of Spring Lake. I would really ask the council to move forward with finishing the parks in our area before they consider a pool that nobody in our district wants. I was speaking to another city councillor who said they had a lot of people calling, none of which were Spring Lake residents. So we don't want that. We want our parks finished. It's actually very insulting to us that they want to continue building tennis courts, basketball courts at the sports park, which is not in our Spring Lake Central, where you now have twelve thousand residents. One quarter to one fifth of your entire city lives in Spring Lake. And we have none of the amenities that the rest of Woodland does. I would implore you to please continue as close to the specific plan that we've all been kind of moving towards and basing off of. That's it. I'll reme- I'll give the rest of my minutes to somebody else who has the whom is.
Thank you. Jennifer Owens. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Hey, this is Jared. Looks like Jennifer might be using an older version of Zoom. I'm not sure if she's gonna be able to talk.
Okay, yeah, I see that a message popped up. Can she have access to call in?
Who are the next one?
Yeah, let's go to the next. Ron Ortell. Ron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Yes, this is Ron Ortell. I'm really disappointed that the council is putting several items together into one agenda item, limiting public comment that way. Each of these needs at least a three minute period in which to speak. And instead, you're doing this. I had a specific question if this CFD for the sports park, which is also for the pool apparently, can be repealed. There was somebody from the from the CFD management company that called somebody in the city, and I've never heard a call back on it. You're you're not gonna hear, you haven't heard the last of this. I can assure you of that. Yeah, this poll is ridiculous. I mean, this is for the school again, you know? Finish the park in the neighborhood. I mean, you want four million dollars almost from the neighborhood to finish the goddamn poll for the for the for the for the school district? And what does that do for the site that's there that was owned by the school district? Does that compromise it for a school that's needed? It's just disgusting. I wasted a minute. The what I really want to talk about, of course, is I'm strongly opposed to the proposal to transfer a portion of Rick Gonzales to the school district. Other than the land grab itself, no plans whatsoever have been presented by the school district, nor is there any justification for it, other than vague references to state requirements from the city manager. As such, you have no reason to even consider the proposal. Schoolchildren already use the site as it is for team sports accompanied by adults who would be there anyway. And they do it every other school. A proposed expansion is a separate issue, really, but it's directly related to the land grab. The land grab sets the whole thing in motion. You're not gonna be able to control what they do. The neighborhood's gonna have no say over it, as demonstrated in the two thousand sixteen letter from the city to the school district, asking them not to go with the design that was selected. It's gonna be exacerbated if the if it expands. Even if the school were to increase its enrollment and instruct infrastructure, there's no justification to take the park site. Spring Lake already has the most acreage land of any elementary school in Woodland. At one time, it was gonna house eight hundred sixty students. They threw out that plan after spending more than eight hundred thousand dollars on it. And eight hundred sixty, more than double what they have now on its own land. I have submitted one hundred eighty-four signatures gathered in person explicitly opposing what you guys are attempting to do. You've already made your your preferences very clear to me, and you still just ignore what the community wants. Finish the goddamn park as you promised six years ago.
Madam Mayor, this is Rich Lansbury.
Yes, Councilmember Lansbury.
The the audience, I want to hear from the audience. I don't have to accept profanity. And you need decorum in this meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jennifer. Jennifer Owens, can you hear me? Okay, geez, I still can't get her. Murray Levinson. Can you hear me? Murray, I think you're muted.
Okay, I can hear you now.
There you go. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Murray Levinson. I live about a block from Spring Lake Elementary and Gonzales Park. At a community meeting a few weeks ago hosted by Mayor Vega, she patiently listened to men many negative comments about how the school district is seeking to undo neighborhood efforts to enjoy a long overdue park. At one point, she asked us, how would you have responded to the school district when they brought up the idea of purchasing two acres of the park? I attempted to answer her question, and tonight I have a more refined answer. When the school district approached the city about buying part of the park, this is how I would have responded. Thank you for your interest in trying to serve the students of your district. However, in case you aren't aware, over the past year, the city of Woodland has spent hundreds of hours and tens of thousands of dollars working on with a park design company to study our existing park plans in Spring Lake, seek and obtain community comments on our draft plans and refine those plans. We presented the updated plans to the community this past summer and received more comments. Then we worked with the company to refine the plans again to be presented to city council. After years of being disappointed in the slow pace of park construction, we have raised expectations in the community that we can now deliver what we are proposing. We are also putting together a bid package for several park construction projects at once, knowing that we could obtain a better price by making the scope of work large enough to interest construction companies. By stopping progress on Gonzales Park, we likely will lose one construction season and will increase the cost of work there. At this point in time, the city has no interest in breaking the news to the community that all their time and comments about Gonzales Park were for nothing and that city staff time and taxpayer dollars were wasted. That is a message that you will have to take to the community. We will help you advertise the meetings and we will be in attendance to help answer questions, but it will have to be your meetings to deliver your message. Should you go forward, expect to hear comments back from the community about how difficult it has been over the past few years to obtain meaningful information from the school district about its enrollment projections and future facilities needs. City staff has been in multiple meetings about the proposed research and technology park project in which we were asked regularly whether the school district wanted to reserve land there for a future purchase. And city staff regularly answered that they were talking with school district staff, but that it did not appear that the school district wanted or needed to buy any more land. That would have been my response to the school district. It's not too late to convey the same message. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Glassman. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you have three minutes.
I guess the, I'm Eric Glassman. I also am a Spring Lake neighbor. I guess the good news is you built a park that everybody loves. The the bad news is I can't believe what a hornet's nest the council has created by even considering the school district's proposal. I'm not sure it's a proposal, because you don't know what they're wanting, but you're somehow seeking our input and going forward with the plans based on an absolute lack of knowledge. What we know so far is we in Spring Lake pay a heck of a lot of our Melrose money to provide for a park that is on the wrong side of the freeway. We have a park in our neighborhood that we love, that is well used, and you want to give it away? This is completely about the school district's mismanagement. This is a situation created by the school district. The master plan has been out for years. They know how many kids to project for. They're the ones that refuse to to go forward with community schools, neighborhood schools. Now they're asking for our park? That that's absurd. If I lived on Banks Drive, i- it all of a sudden I heard that there's going to be much more traffic on a street that was never intended for that kind of traffic with a larger school, I'd be absolutely outraged. And now you, as the city council, have the absolute arrogance to suggest that we solve the district's problem by telling the neighborhood that what we waited for for years in this park to be completed is now going to be given away to rescue the district from its own mismanagement? We use that park every day. We're seniors, we're peo- we're families, we're people who use the 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 decomposed granite walkways. That park is loved and is used by us. Why would you give it away? The council frankly needs to butt out of this situation. The district has created this problem. It needs to solve the problem. How does it solve the problem? It creates a new school in the tech park. Do you have any idea how upset parents are at Spring Lake at the possibility of this expansion? Of course you don't, because this isn't your constituency. You represent the neighborhood. I gotta tell you, I talked to families who were saying, why the heck would the school district buy, build an MPR for the three hundred and thirty kids only to tell us later that it's insignificant because they didn't plan? But out of this situation, let the school district do its own job. Let us keep our park. You promised it to us.
Esteban Soto Martinez, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, you have.
Thank you. Beautiful. I don't think I can express as well as Eric and Ron has already. I think hit the point, you know, very well, but I'm gonna I call other side. I'm, you know, the proud father of three kids that are to Spring Lake Elementary. I have mentioned already several times that I am incredibly opposed to a ridiculous plan that has been proposed to us. I I cannot believe, you know, that incredible growth that our entire community has had in over the decade and even more with the growth that is expected to the ten in the next ten years that the the school district and and again.
We lost him, Anna. I think we lost him. I see Jennifer Owens is farther down here. Maybe she's logged in. Oh, no, I don't see her. Okay. Should we start with someone else?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Sherry. Sherry, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I just moved up here about a month ago from Alameda. And, you know, I probably never would have thought that I would buy from a developer because that just seems gross. But I did for an investment property. And I'm queer and I'm a psychotherapist. And so I, and Asian, so I bring, and I'm an immigrant, so I think I bring some diversity to your community. And then, so I'm not going to have kids and nor do I have kids. And I have a senior dog. And I do a lot of fostering of senior dogs for the various shelters. But it takes at least ten minutes for me to get to Rick Gonzales park. And then by the time my senior dog gets there, there's really, we can't really do anything because we gotta turn around and come back. So I tell you, in Alameda where I was living, there were multiple parks I could walk to, just within a few blocks. Within one or two blocks at at the most. And so it, this just feels very like it's a bunch of homes. And then there's no, like, I understand there wouldn't be corner stores because it's a white neighborhood. But I also would have liked there to be some grocery stores, something I can walk to. I also understand this is like a suburb. But there seems as if it's just a bunch of homes here. And it's not, it doesn't feel like a community where I can walk to something, you know? And it's, I just wanted to mention those things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer. Jennifer, I'm sorry. Okay. Carol, Carol Crowder, can you hear me? Carol?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
All right. I'd like to start talking about the academic or the school portion first. And as you may all know, all school districts are required to post annual local control and accountability plans called LCAPs on their websites. You can find it on the school district website. In these plans, districts are required to describe their goals and action steps to support positive student outcomes as well as how and why they've chosen the programs and services. A required element of all LCAPs is a discussion of facilities because facilities are considered condition a condition of learning crucial to student outcomes. However, Woodland District, in their most recent end of June, two thousand twenty-one LCAP, did make made no mention of enlarging Spring Lake campus for grade growth or facilities growth in any section of the document, including the required section on stakeholder involvement in decision making, parents, teachers, and the community. Coupled with the district's own reporting of thirty-five to fifty percent satisfaction on various parent survey indicators, you should be concerned that, at best, this project is premature. Therefore, I'm requesting that the city council delay taking action until the district provides a comprehensive report that includes a description of how it involved teachers, parents, and the larger community to determine if Spring Lake Elementary needs more space to serve more students. I was under the impression that you had been approved or the district had been approved for Spring Lake Elementary to serve eight hundred students in its existing space. A previous commenter might have said that's not true anymore, so I apologize. But even that. But even that size will already bring unique challenges to the school and community. At a minimum, to ensure our changed land uses have benefit to residents and schoolchildren, you should ask for documentation of the need for more space for more students. You should know how a bigger school impact academics and school culture and address currently low parent involvement and currently high chronic absenteeism. You should know what the district will do with the space. You should have a fully developed revised site facilities plan that includes buildings, fencing, landscaping, and other improvements, and traffic patterns. Without this information, you cannot possibly assess the impact of your decision. You should also require that the district be transparent about the likelihood and size of future bond requests. After the district has provided you with information to assess the impact of any decision you might make, you should still delay taking action until after you develop and publish a comprehensive park redesign that at a minimum includes replacement of the walkway lights and landscaping you plan to destroy, invite public comment, and issue written findings that address the public testimony. In conclusion, my friends and neighbors have various viewpoints on this topic. But you have an opportunity here to model and experience consensus if you take these steps to demonstrate your stewardship of our children's education and our shared community resources through your openness, thoughtfulness, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hogan, can you hear me?
Joe? Hi, actually, this is actually Jennifer Hogan. Um, I'm Jeff Hogan, and I would just like to, um, be commenting to say that I would like to be a strong voice for, um, building a pool, a community pool adjacent to Pioneer High School. I think this side of town needs a community pool. Um, I personally would like to, to use the pool for exercise and going to the opposite corner of town is just not practical for me. And I imagine I'm not the only person living in the Spring Lakes area who would want to use this pool for this reason. So, um, and that's my only comment, but then I have a question of, uh, when do you anticipate having the pedestrian bike, uh, connection overpass from the Spring Lake area over to, um, the sports park? Thank you.
And I see Jennifer Owens still there. Can you, can you try and see if she can speak? Yeah, I have, I have a 773 number. Is that Jennifer on another line? I've lost Jennifer.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, this is Jennifer Owens. Sorry for all the technical challenges. I could hear you all the time. Um, I would like to say I'm a resident here in, uh, Spring Lake as well as a parent of a student at Spring Lake Elementary School and the president of our PTO. So very much care about education. However, I've been very closely involved in conversations with both, um, Ken and the district and know that the district is far from having an answer, unfortunately, to provide, um, back to the council. And so I would really like to see the council rescind the offer to sell the portion of land at Rick Gonzalez Park and instead include it as part of the overall, uh, plan with all the parks uh, that are supposed to happen in 2022 to maximize the use of our park funds and to go ahead and get our parks completed. I would also like to say that I feel that we should get all the original amenities that were planned, um, at Rick Gonzalez Park frankly, and all of the Spring Lake parks, and they should not be sacrificed due to the, the sports park financing or the community pool financing. I think those should come after giving us the amenities that actually the community did vote for, but then later we were told we didn't have money to do all the things um, that we wanted and that were in the original design. So I would like the, the council to think about that. We are already paying, as you know, the ongoing CFD. There's a lot of, you know, community unhappiness with the fact that a huge part of our acreage was given to the sports park and that we're continuing to pay a huge percentage of the maintenance on that. Um, so I don't want to see our parks, our actual three neighborhood parks suffer as a result. Lastly, I am in favor of ultimately having a community pool on this side of town. Our family would love to use it. But I really want to be, um, comfortable and hope that there's transparency around the financing of it. Uh, I don't believe that we should be entering into another CFD to pay for ongoing maintenance, um, just like we have been trapped into with the sports park. And I don't feel that our, as I mentioned before, our park, um, design should suffer as a result to pay for it. Um, nor should I think you enter into the deal with Rick Gonzalez um, in order to have more funds to complete the pool, which, um, you know, has been floated as another, um, opportunity for why you would want to sell the park. So all in all, I really believe that we should move forward with all of our parks getting completed as planned and abandon the idea of, um, selling the land to the school district. Thank you very much.
Tatiana Bonilla? Tatiana, can you hear me?
Hello, uh, this is not Tatiana, this is Esteban. Sorry. I, I was, um, trying to convey my message, but for some reason I got kicked out. Um, I wanna make sure that, um, I convey the message again. You know, I'm a, I'm a father of three kids, you know, that are already attending, um, Spring Lake. We live close to the school and, you know, have to suffer, you know, really the amount of traffic, you know, that, um, you know, takes place every morning. Um, there has been really little care, you know, to, you know, actually mandate, you know, the low-speed limit. So I would like to see that change. But talking specifically about the proposal of, um, ripping apart and start tearing out a park that was just created less than five years ago is, is pretty ridiculous, in my opinion. Um, the park itself is, um, is used, is used, you know, by the neighborhood. Um, and, and in my opinion, the city council should be starting to take care, you know, not only in completing the park, of course, you know, as it has been promised and already have been, you know, that, that the message has been conveyed very well by, by our other, um, neighbors. But also in taking care of the already placed, uh, amenities. It is ridiculous, you know, that, you know, the soccer field, for example, those soccer, um, goals have been unusable for months. Over this year, they have been changed. There is no nets anymore. So please don't call it a, uh, a family field, you know, when, when because of you guys don't taking care of it, it has been able to be used. Uh, the grass in that whole area is now, you know, pretty dangerous. If you take a time, you know, and walk around it, there has been zero, zero, absolutely zero, um, um, effort, you know, into keeping, you know, that, that field well. And now it's gonna be more expensive, actually, pretty much, you know, putting it together back again. I love the idea of the swimming pool, but again, as it has been already very well raised, you know, we should be taking baby steps in here. It is clear that you guys don't want to open up another, uh, again, mess, you know? Try to finish, you know, what you have promised already. Complete the park, you know, complete what was promised to the neighborhood. And then just my most important point in here. I cannot believe that the best plan for the city council and for the school district is to just basically tear apart again, you know, apart. With the growth of, of, of people, of neighbors, you know, in this entire area, that, that focus should be to go ahead and, and not being like, you know, just expanding one school, but actually creating a new one. It is obvious that we will need one in the next five years with the amount of growth and the tech park when it comes. There should be another elementary school. There should be another middle school in this, in this area. So as much as I love the idea of the, of the pool, it is clear to me that you guys should be, you know, putting efforts on finishing what you promised. And then of course, you know, on, on, uh, building the other schools. Thank you.
Carol Piricello? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Um, I didn't plan on public comment, but, um, the, I, the idea and the fruition of another community pool is very near and dear to my heart. I don't know how many of the other listeners and community members have been up to the Charles Books, uh, pool. And it's a fine pool, however, there is no locker room. You can actually see into the women's locker room if you walk by the aisle. It is old and antiquated, not necessarily that well-maintained. The staff are very good. Um, but for a city this size, we really need more amenities for our youth and also for our aging population. Besides that, I'm hearing a lot of comments about finishing Rick Gonzalez Park, and I do, um, support their opinions that really the park should be finished. And I don't know all the ins and outs of it. I live over by Road 98. So either pool isn't very convenient for me. But I know the city needs another pool for youth, especially in our warm months. Uh, we need a place for kids to cool off and have fun. So I, and speak very strongly in support of a community pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Bronner? Anna? Can you hear me?
Hi, hi. My name is Colleen Bronner. Um, I am a professor at UC Davis as well in civil and environmental engineering. And I wanted to start by thanking, uh, Mr. Hyatt for the presentation. I thought it was, it was helpful to see what was going on in the different aspects. So I really appreciated that. So thank you for that. I wanna start just by asking questions. So if the city council does decide to move forward and keep this block of land, um, kind of in, I guess, limbo, what's the process and how will decisions be made? Because to me, the transparency piece here is ultimately the most important thing for all of these issues as a community and building trust between the community and obviously the city council. Um, I don't have as much interaction with the school board. But I'd like to know exactly what the process is because I, I heard in Mr. Hyatt's presentation that no decisions have been made except to kind of put this land in limbo. But for me, it'd be really helpful to know what's the next step? Um, when does it potentially decide that, no, it, um, we take that land out of limbo? Or what is the process that the city council is going to go through? Because I think, to me, that is really important so that city coun-, so community members can also figure out how to best have our voices heard beyond just this meeting. Um, and that's all I have, just lots of questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, Wendy Light? Can you hear me? Wendy?
Please say, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, before the pandemic, when we could attend meetings in person, I did attend a Spring Lake, um, information meeting about the parks. And I have to say, I really appreciated the city council's decision to partially build out all three Spring Lake parks rather than finish one entirely and not, not start the others. It was an exciting day when the Rick Gonzalez Park was, um, open to the public. It was festive. People were able to walk. It did not seem to matter that we did not have a park. Um, there was a great big crowd celebrating. Since the pandemic, the use of that park, although taped off for the playground, pathways were incredibly busy. Um, the idea of taking out that cement walkway that separates the undeveloped land from the developed part seems sad. It hasn't been there very long. And just to take out something that I know costs a lot, uh, concrete is not inexpensive, just seems such a waste to me. Um, somebody who spoke earlier said, oh, the Banks Drive residence should be up there. As a teacher myself, I can tell you that this is a magnet school. Spring Lake Elementary, open to school children throughout the district. It's an esteemed school, um, science, technology, engineering, art, and, um, math. And so it has a lot of parents driving their children to this school. There is a lot of traffic. And it's not just in the morning, like one speaker said. It is at the early dismissal time for the younger students and at a later dismissal time for the older students. Um, I do think that the Technology Park needs its own school rather than grow the size of Spring Lake Elementary. And finally, my question is, has the city really already offered to the school district to sell a portion of the Rick Gonzalez Park? I was surprised to hear that in the comments. Is this already sort of like a done deal? Or is it still open to discussion? So that's my question. I would love to hear answered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrington? Can you hear me, Michael? Michael? Michael Carrington? You may be muted. Okay, I can go on to the next. The next one is, uh, Greek alphabet. Hieroglyphics. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kevin Shimokawa. Um, I'd like to thank you guys for considering a possible solution to the Spring Lake issue. I know it's not within your control with, as far as what the school district does. Um, at the moment, based on what, what limited amounts I know, it doesn't seem that the school district has come forth with a fully formed plan or at least been open about it. So I can understand a lot of people's reservations about, um, moving forward with plans to change what was the original plan. Coupled with the ability or the inability to really ascertain what their, their genuine majority opinion is in our area, I, I fully understand the, the difficulty of this, uh, this matter. But regardless of what the outcome is, I, I, I think it's worth considering solutions to a, a very clear problem. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, other questions I have are, are regarded to the CFDs. Um, uh, how would the sports park future expansions impact the sports park CFD or the additions of new, um, neighborhoods change the CFD funding? Um, are there any anticipated changes to the lighting and landscape CFDs with, uh, any, uh, park area increases? And, uh, I know I've asked Ken this before, but, um, any, any plans to fully, uh, go after the full amount allowable under the Spring Lake CFD? Mainly I, I try to look at the ongoing costs of things. So that's something I'd always consider with something like a pool. What are the ongoing expenses? How would they at least be thought of to be managed? Uh, I know we're, we're talking a lot of hypotheticals. Yeah, just any future cost concerns, ongoing cost concerns and how they're, how they would be carried by the city and, and specifically Spring Lake. Uh, bearing in mind, I did hear some, some use of the term city funds and then Spring Lake funds, but Spring Lake funds are city funds. The CFDs are just something that Spring Lake pays in addition. So, uh, you know, if you could speak to some of those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Michael Carrington? Michael, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, sorry, I was having some audio difficulties there. So, um, yeah, we have been in this, uh, neighborhood for 12 years now. And to give some context, um, back before there was Rick Gonzalez Park, um, I used to shoot a lot of rockets with my boys. Um, there were no homes on Nico Avenue or on the stretch in Centennial. Um, and so we waited, uh, over eight years to actually have the park built. We've seen several incantations of the plan. Part of, you know, at one point, there was commercial development on one end of the park. That got squashed. Then there was plans to build houses along Centennial on the north end of Rick Gonzalez Park. We fought back that battle. Um, now we have another encroachment on the park. So I, I guess my voice would just be to echo what others have said in terms of finish the park as planned. Um, and a question that I have that I'd like answered is, um, there is a piece of vacant land just north of the elementary school that is bare before it gets to, you know, before you get to the park, uh, walkway on the south side of Rick Gonzalez Park. Uh, are there, are there plans to use that large piece of land without encroaching into the actual park? The, right now, there's construction equipment that's parked there. Um, and, and actually, the school is already using Rick Gonzalez. And actually, the school is already using Rick Gonzales Park because they have students out there on a daily basis that are using the soccer bowls. They're already using that portion of land that is being proposed to be taken over by the school district. But I guess I would just echo the others that have said, finish the park as planned. And I think the other relief valve for you as council members is finish the overcrossing so the Spring Lake folks can enjoy the sports park. I'll give my remaining minute up to another speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Vega, I don't see anyone else raising their hand.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Okay.
I think maybe there is one down here somewhere.
Can you see Marvin? Hand raised?
Marvin? Can you hear me? Marvin? Marvin Shirkey? Can you hear me? Are you muted, Marvin? We can go to the, we have another speaker. Brian Howard?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes, Brian.
Okay, thank you. Man, this has been great to hear everybody's comments. I'm so grateful for everybody in the community speaking out and up about what's going on in Spring Lake in terms of development. As far as Rick Gonzales Park goes, yeah, I would, you know, I feel like, you know, just like the rest of us, the city is getting, you know, yanked around by the district. And, you know, there was supposed to be a joint meeting organized between the city and the district that brought the community together to talk about our concerns. And that meeting never happened. And so we're here again, not having any idea what the district is planning. And I'll tell you, it's totally what the district is, you know, I've been working with them for a long time to try to get that tech park, you know, included in the land use map. And, you know, ironically, tonight, they're having a board meeting for, yeah, a board meeting. So, you know, I can't imagine that any of them will be attending this meeting to provide any input from the district. So I feel like we still have a lot of work to do if we were even going to consider anything like that. But I honestly feel like the city should just move ahead with the park and provide all the amenities that we deserve. As far as the sports park goes, Ken, thank you for the update on that. And thank you for talking to me independently in a meeting a couple of weeks ago and, you know, assuring me that Spring Lake will start to be included in conversations around the development of the sports park and promising to start showing the sports park on Spring Lake Park maps. On all the maps, it's never shown. All we see is the neighborhood parks and not the sports park. We contribute to that. We deserve to have input in that. And we have gone 20 years without having any input in that park's design. I'd also like to echo that, yes, we should have had all of these items itemized out so we could make comments about each for three minutes. I feel like I'm talking very fast because I don't have a lot of time. And then also with the pool, it's icy on the cake to me. If the city really wanted a pool, they should have been saving over the last 20 years for a pool. And Spring Lake lost a road. 25A is not complete. We need a thoroughfare there so that people are not having to drive around on banks, which is where, you know, children come and go to school. We should not be looking to invest in a pool with any Spring Lake funds until we have the roads, the critical infrastructure that we need to behold. So thank you.
Thank you. Mona? Can you hear me, Mona? Mona, you're muted.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Well, I must say that I wasn't up to speed about the district wanting to take over two acres of the Gonzales Park, but I totally am not in agreement with that. I think the park should go ahead and get planned out the way it was. And I think pressure should be put on this school district. It seems pretty incompetent and not responsive to the needs of all the families in Spring Lake to not be planning for a future school and a school site. And take a look at the enrollment that's projected. And I'm just shocked at how the district isn't coming through with getting something on the books right now about another school site. So I'd say they're on their own for getting that other school site. And they need to do it quickly. And they need to feel the pressure of it without taking away from Rick Gonzales Park. On the other hand, I'm really strongly in support of a pool over in, near the Spring Lake area. I've been in several communities where there have been joint school, city parks that are pools that work really well together. The kids use them for their competition during parts of the day, and the community has access to the pools the rest of the time. And I've never in my life lived in such a hot community as Woodland. Like, not hot, you know, temperature-wise, it's hot. And I just think kids would love having a pool within walking or biking distance to all these houses in Spring Lake. And I'm really strongly in favor of a pool for all ages, not just kids, but seniors, people exercising. I think it's a great asset. But as far as taking away two acres of Rick Gonzales Park for the school district? No, no, no. They need to get their act together and move quickly to identify their needs for this big community down here in Spring Lake and have their own, another, probably another whole site. And they need to do it quickly, and they need to feel the pressure. And if, back to the pool, if money needs to come from the big complex across the highway that we can't use very well yet without people having to drive, I'm highly in favor of bringing this pool idea over to Spring Lake so we have some aspect of a community's sports facility on our side of 113. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin? Can you hear me? Marvin? Marvin Shirkey? Marvin, you're the last hand I have raised.
Okay, I know, it sounds like he's having some issues connecting. At this point, I don't see any other hands raised on us. So I'm going to do one last call for anybody who is attending via Zoom. Not seeing any hands raised. We're going to go ahead. And Madam Clerk, do you have voicemails to share with council?
Mayor Vega, we have over 35 voicemail messages.
Okay.
So Jay Kamara, our IT staff person, will be playing those back to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, this is Rebecca Galaway. This message is for the December 9th City Council meeting. It's in regards to Rick Gonzales Park. I am opposed to the sale and part of Rick Gonzales Park land to the school district. I participated in the survey and received multiple information notices regarding input for the park. I never received anything saying the school district or city was having a meeting regarding reducing Rick Gonzales Park size and the school district acquiring the land. Park land needs to remain park land. It was paid for by the developers' fees, which in turn were incorporated into the prices of our homes. It needs to stay as a park and be available at the park size with the proposed improvements without reduction for the residents of Spring Lake. I specifically use this park and pass every day. It increases the quality of life for Spring Lake residents. I come to my city with developers, one of them being Lennar. Donated land and contributed significantly to the cost of building a new school. Perhaps the school district should pursue this and leave Rick Gonzales Park alone. In addition, increasing the size of the school greatly adds to traffic concern on the streets around Spring Lake Elementary School. The streets are not designed to handle the current amount of traffic they receive, now let alone increase in traffic. In conclusion, I support the plan put forward at the community meeting, showing the dark, dog park and increased amenities. Thank you.
Are you playing the next story?
Dear Willie County Council, I want to thank you for hearing my voice tonight. My name is Ron Porch. I'm not in favor of losing any part of Rick Martinez Park Senior. Their senior park. Now, why should the city council care about what I think to desire? I'm altruistic enough to hope that you're going to listen to those of us who live near the park, who are involved in communities there in various ways on a regular basis. This park has become part of my life and our lives. It's a place we see each other. And I don't think that's a small thing in this digital world that fosters independence. To us, this park has become part of our lives in a short period of time. So I want to believe that you as a committee will, as a council, will take this information for the meeting tonight and have a fresh consideration of the actions you're about to take. I know this, many who've become, you know, part of this community and part of this park that I'm around, don't know about this situation. They don't know that it's a possibility of losing the park if not a fait accompli. And they see the park and think of it as a permanent part of the community. It's already built. Here it is. Got a sign. I would hope that many more steps would be taken to alert the Spring Lake population, hearing from them prior to making any decisions about losing the park. I'm at the park almost every day and recent weeks, the people I talk to have no idea about any of this. Some feel powerless and ask immediately, why? How can this happen? Now, I can say that, you know, if I was a representative, I would want to make sure we had a thorough hearing from the people in the community. And, you know, it's not enough to say we're hearing from such and such. I would hope that we want to hear, have a fuller meeting that was well promoted from people who know that the park's on the line. I'll give you my anecdote poll. I've not talked to one person who wants to lose an inch of this park. They at least want to be given a fuller accounting of what's going in this decision and not just given a final decree about what's best for the community. So I ask you, please let this community be heard in a fuller way. My rubbing shoulders of people, you know, shows that people don't know. So they don't know that what's at stake here. So if I was a representative, I wouldn't want to govern this way. Even if I had the power to do so. So let's have a town meeting. If we have the social business, we have a gym. Rent a gym and have more space there together. But I appeal to you for more transparency and let's move in that kind of spirit. So let the people know about this before they have something away from them. I really appreciate you hearing my thoughts on this tonight. Bye-bye.
We do not support the expansion of Spring Lake Elementary into the adjacent park site. We would like the park to remain at its full ten acre size, which was already paid for by the neighborhood. Schoolchildren can already use the park as is and already do so to play team sports, accompanied by staff. The school is not designed to handle a significant increase in the number of students in regard to common shared facilities. Example, parking, multipurpose room, library, teacher lounge, et cetera. The city of Woodland identified traffic issues in 2016 as a problem when the school was being built. These concerns remain unresolved. Adding more students after expansion will cause even more traffic on nickel, banks, promenade, and Somerset Circle. These streets are not wide enough to handle the traffic now, let alone after expanding the school. The Spring Lake area has grown so large that one small school cannot handle all the students in this area. There needs to be another school to handle all the additional students in the Spring Lake area. Taking out the existing lighting in the path would be a waste of money for infrastructure that we have already paid for. In addition, there are many who use the peripheral path for exercise, which would be significantly compromised if the path is shortened. Also, there are no assurances that the replacement path and lighting would be of the same quality, nor is it clear who would be paying for this destruction and relocation to a smaller park. The existing path functions as a wide, lighted boundary between the park and school site. That would not be the case if the path and lighting is destroyed and relocated. It's likely that security concerns will arise as a result of the semi-public nature of the comprised site, which would be partially obstructed by fencing and additional landscaping. Please leave Rick Gonzales Park the way it was meant to be and finish the proposed landscaping plan. In addition, we would prefer that the city return to the original design, which included parking lot. In conclusion, taking 2A curse from Mark Park to give to Spring Lake School would increase traffic on streets that cannot handle this, and the school was not designed to handle more students. Please leave our park the way it was meant to be. Sincerely, Janet and Steve Collins. My husband and I moved to Somerset Circle in 2006. We anxiously awaited the park and had to wait for it much longer than we anticipated. In fact, the park was a partial reason we moved to this location. We supported in person keeping the park at the ten acre size, and we're very happy that the original plan was honored. During the recent lockdown, we used the park almost every day. Due to our health needs, the granite path was what we needed and used exclusively. To think that our park would be reduced in size and good quality sidewalks, lighting and more would be destroyed doesn't make sense. There was a sense of community going there during lockdown. It brought our Spring Lake community together. Once we take space away, it never comes back. Parks are very important to a neighborhood. And with homes now having reduced yards, there is limited space for families and kids to run and play in a safe environment. This park is used more than I had expected, and it makes me very happy to see this occurring. I am aware there are other alternatives to alleviate potential growth in school needs. And I'm requesting that these other options be looked at seriously. Sincerely, Steve and Randy Blake. To whom it may concern, I am a resident of Somerset Circle. This area is lovely, and my husband and I have enjoyed retiring and moving to this community. I'm writing to express my disappointment with the Rick Gonzales Park site being considered as an option for the expansion of Spring Lake Elementary. This seems like a short sighted solution. I am a retired David dignified school teacher, and believe me, I'm certainly in favor of neighborhood schools, but the elementary school was designed to be a smaller magnet, STEM school. The bordering roads, parking lots, spaces are inadequate for a larger school. The physical space here was not designed to accommodate the larger student body along with all the parents, cars, traffic that would ensue. In addition, the residents around this park, as others around other parks in Woodland, provided feedback for what we would like to see included in the remaining park spaces. We purchased our homes here and are now being advised that some of the existing periphery walkway around the park may be demolished and a chunk of the park may be under construction for enlarging the school. Building a large school for this area, which is proposed in the research park design, is the answer. Spring Lake homeowners pay MELUSB fees to pay for infrastructure, schools and parks. Enlarging Spring Lake Elementary by taking over parkland is a Band-Aid solution. It is not a tenable, long-range solution. The safety of the students and surrounding neighbors would be compromised. The park and the families, children and neighbors who enjoy Rick Gonzales Park would be compromised. We are paying for this park, and it should be developed according to the plan set forth a few months ago. The city of Woodland needs to improve planning and budgeting practices. Thank you, Ellen Pelkey. Dear Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we're writing to you to express our hearty support for a future pool in the Spring Lake neighborhood. We've lived in the Spring Lake area since 2013 and love the area and welcome its diversity. As parents to an active five-year-old, the prospect of a community pool in our neighborhood by Pioneer High School is tremendously appealing. Currently, we take our son to swim classes and days. It would be wonderful if we could take him to a Woodland pool in our neighborhood. The pool would... The pool would be an ideal place to meet your neighbors, where family members and children can come and mingle among each other and build a sense of community. A local pool in the Spring Lake area would bring a lot of benefits to the neighborhood. It would provide health, social, and recreational benefits. We respectfully request you do all you can to bring a community pool to the Spring Lake area. Sincerely, Tuan Guian and Fabiola Zuno. City Council and School Board members, the proposed sale of a portion of Rick Gonzales Park to the Woodland School District for the purpose of expanding Spring Lake Elementary School would directly impact us as close neighbors of the Spring Lake Elementary School. Specifically, the school was not designed to accommodate substantially more students with regard to access and common facilities. Expansion will result in even more potentially dangerous traffic conditions on Mickel, Banks, Promenade, and Somerset Circle. Taking out the existing lighting in the path would be a waste of money for infrastructure that we have already paid for and use regularly. Reducing the size of the park and elimination of future amenities would diminish its value as a neighborhood asset. However, a more important concern is that any expansion of the school with or without additional land acquisition should be considered only as part of a long-range plan that considers feasible alternative solutions and identifies the most cost-effective alternative to meet the student population needs of the entire Spring Lake development area. Providing such a plan is a primary responsibility of the city and the district. Clearly expanding Spring Lake Elementary alone will not meet these needs and will not satisfy the demands of their parents for a neighborhood school. Acquisition of parkland by the district and expansion of the school outside a comprehensive long-range plan would clearly be a Band-Aid approach and a misuse of very limited district funds. We urge that consideration of the sale of a portion of Rick Gonzales Park to the Woodland School District for the purpose of expanding Spring Lake Elementary School be tabled and perhaps considered later on only as part of one or more alternative solutions in a long-range planning effort. Thank you for your consideration, Robert and Tony Smith.
Madam Mayor, continue the meeting.
Yes, Councilmember Landsberg, thank you so much. Say, I, did you say, continue the meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting till eight twenty at the most.
Is that going to give us enough time? I think we have a eight twenty, so it's eight o'clock now.
Jay, I don't think that'll give you enough time to listen to the rest of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to eight thirty then.
I think we may need more time, it sounds like.
Miss Vega.
I'm sorry, uh, did you want me to continue?
Jay, if you could pause for a minute, I think we need to have the council take up consideration of Councilmember Landsberg's motion.
Thank you, Manager Hyatt.
For these, the comments, we have to have an expanded meeting. We were scheduled to eight o'clock.
Both the public realizes that all of these comments have been furnished to the council in hard copy.
Ethan, can you, um, help us out here?
Sure, so, so, um, Councilman, or Councilmember Landsberg's made a motion to continue the meeting to eight thirty. That's correct. All the, all the comments that you're receiving right now were previously provided in writing to the council, so you don't, you don't have to listen to them, you don't have to read them all in the record, they are already part of the record because you received them in writing. So you can, you can continue to, to listen to them until eight thirty if you, if you want to, uh, take them under submission based on the fact that they've all been submitted to you in writing, you could do that by motion at this point, by motion second and a vote, and then have discussion until eight thirty if you like. Those are essentially your, your options. The council, the, the, the city is, as a general matter, read these, read these, um, these emails into the record since we've been in COVID, but because they were provided to you ahead of time, you're, you're not required to because you're giving the community other ways to participate and, um, and you have all the information already in writing to consider as part of your decision-making process. So I hope that helps. And right now, there's a motion from Councilmember Landsberg on the floor. I don't think there's a second yet.
I'll second that motion.
Well, I was going to, uh, make a comment and then make a decision about my motion. If these are the ones, the same ones that we just received, uh, by email, now I don't think I need to hear them again, I've already read them. If that's the case, I'm going to rescind my motion to extend to eight thirty. I would make a motion to extend for ten minutes for council comments.
Okay, so that's the mo, then that's the motion on the floor, um, and, and so it's open for a second.
Madam Mayor, if I can also add to the consideration here, we have received a couple voicemails, um, during the, the hearing that technically have not been submitted in advance, so I would advise that we at least hear those voicemails that have been received during the meeting so they can be read into the record. Uh, and the balance of them has been discussed that were received via email are already there and we can, uh, in fact, they've already been uploaded to the item and council has copies of those.
Okay, so then, um, Councilmember Landsberg, motion to extend to eight, eight-ten? Or eight-thirty? Councilmember?
We're already at thirteen.
Yeah, we're already at it.
Let's just make it eight-thirty and be done with it, please. That's my motion, eight-thirty.
All right. Mayor Fernandez, is that? Does your second still stand?
I'm sorry, um, Mayor Vega, I think that we should hear the, the messages that we haven't heard, and just want to clarify that the public has access to the information that we receive, correct?
So if we only need six minutes to listen to two messages and then have a discussion for, I don't know, what time are we at? Eight fifteen? So it gives us ten minutes for, nine minutes for discussion? So if, I will second that motion if that's what we're doing. I just want to clarify that that's what we are voting on. And I think that's a clarification is correct. Um, City Manager Hyatt, right, we have, um, everything is, that was received in advances in the record, um, outside of the voicemails that we, we've got just tonight. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So all emails that were received prior to six-thirty have been uploaded to the website and are currently there as part of the attachments to the staff report. Uh, it sounds like we have three additional voicemails that have come in during the meeting. Um, five minutes in total, so the council wants to hear those and consider those prior to discussion, um, I would recommend that.
That'd be my request, let's listen to them.
As the clerk need to call the roll on that motion.
I think.
I, I believe we still need a second.
I have a second on the floor, I second that motion.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protim Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Stalard?
Aye.
Mayor Vega?
No.
Motion carries four-zero.
Okay, so go ahead and listen to the voice messages that arrived.
Hi, my name is Forzan Dzeri, I live in Spring Lake neighborhood, and I, I am making a comment regarding the district acquiring, uh, part of the Spring Lake park as, uh, to expand the school district. I state that there has been no justification, no, um, for acquiring the land or, there has been no solid specific details on how the project is going to be moving forward. And, um, I think that the vote should be held, uh, should be delayed or suspended until details are provided to how, is the action is going to look for Elspring Elementary School, or what the objective is. Uh, my concern is with the construction, with the different neighborhoods, uh, climate that might, might be, uh, might happen as a result of an expansion, but the details of the park and, uh, or school expansion. Thank you.
My name is Darrell Glenn, and I'm a neighborhood resident and homeowner calling in reference to the proposed Spring Lake School District, uh, expansion project. My objection to the school district, proposed expansion, that the project lacks the sort of specificity that is in my mind, or could away my concerns as a resident. My own research has revealed that these plans haven't been, uh, solidified, uh, they don't come close to achieving draft status, and the full scope of the specifications to neighborhood dwellers can amorphously address if at all. Uh, what I see is the Spring Lake Elementary project with a neighborhood undefined expansion of the neighborhood community subsequently, have no say-so whatsoever in how the expansion unfolded, residents in even the city of Woodland wouldn't be able to control or modify the school district subsequently pursued, and that sort of cartoon of implementation could compromise this community.
Hello, my name is Brian Keller, I'm a resident, um, calling about the special council meeting that's taking place tonight, and I'm calling.
Anna, I've already heard from Mr. Keller.
I have been following the development.
Jay, can you stop that?
That is it.
Okay. All right, so we're finished with what we're able to get through as far as, um, public comment. Anna, thank you so much for, for reading, um, all of those emails we got, I really appreciate it, you taking the time to do that.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so now I'm going to bring it back, we have a, a few minutes, um, for council discussion. So, open it up to my colleagues.
Well, I'm not afraid to start. Uh, this is what democracy is all about. I'm glad we heard from the, uh, individuals by email and by phone message and, and live. It's good to hear the, uh, back and forth from community members, um, and their thoughts regarding the parks. I'm glad to see such tremendous support for spark parks. I'm glad to see tremendous support for pools, for the pool, and, um, I'm glad that we had this opportunity to listen to, uh, mostly Spring, Spring Lake residents and their concerns about the, uh, the motion or idea, whatever it was, that, regarding this, uh, potential or thought of selling a portion of our park to the, uh, school district. So I appreciate the robust discussions and it certainly gives, uh, me food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landsberg.
Ms. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, I will.
Oh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Garcia Cadena.
Yeah, I just, I want to echo what Councilmember Landsberg said. I, I think it was important that we heard from the community members in Spring Lake, and, um, it sounds like we got a, um, a diverse group that, um, contributed, and I appreciate them getting involved and, uh, sharing their thoughts with us on this.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Fernandez?
Are you? I'm sorry, I, my computer froze, so I missed the last part of that comment from Councilmember Landsberg, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll chime in, just really want to, uh, say thank you, uh, City Manager and for your staff for, for putting out this, this meeting notification for this meeting, so, uh, postcards were mailed, um, to the community to engage and ask for their input. You know, as we heard today, there is, uh, there's a lot of love for, for our parks. Um, there is, uh, interest in the pools and just an overwhelming, um, engagement from this community, so I just want to, uh, thank you for, for doing that thorough outreach, um, properly noticing this meeting, uh, because as we see, we have, um, a lot of, uh, folks that are, that love this neighborhood and are very interested, so thank you for that. All right, so any, any closing, uh, closing remarks? Um, Mr. Hyatt, on next steps?
Yeah, so next steps, uh, you know, certainly we'll take all this feedback and, um, you know, staff is encouraged as well by just the passion and, and the engagement that we heard from Spring Lake. Uh, these are important topics, uh, to the community, important topics to the neighborhood. Um, so we'll take all this feedback. Uh, we heard, you know, a combination of, of comments as well as questions. Uh, what we'll try to do is distill the questions, uh, that we heard this evening and provide responses to those and encourage, uh, folks to continue to, um, look at the Spring Lake resident, um, information page on the city's webpage. Uh, we'll continue to use that as a primary source to, um, provide a database for all the responses to these questions and issues. Uh, many of those are actually already answered on there, but we will continue to, to update those relative to action on these three specific topics. Um, you know, we'll distill, uh, the comments and feedback, work with the council and then bring back, um, any future actions, uh, on these in the context of these, uh, these questions and the feedback that we've received. Um, so, uh, we will certainly, of course, as well, continue to, uh, engage with the school district, uh, around their long-range planning. Um, one of the comments that we heard that I, I failed to address in my remarks relative to the tech park was, uh, considerations and discussions around expansion of Spring Lake Elementary, um, are not, uh, you know, an alternative to a future, uh, tech park school. We continue to make that a priority part of the, uh, the research and technology park project, so, uh, those are two distinct issues as far as we're concerned, um, and we'll continue to engage with the, the district on those. So, um, with that, happy to answer any questions the council may have that you'd like to, to have me address at this time, otherwise, um, look forward to continuing to work with the council and the community and the district to, to find the right balance to these issues.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I don't see any hands raised for any questions from my colleagues. Oh, um, Mayor Protim Fernandez?
Thank you. Um, I did have a few questions, um, in the report that was presented, um, tonight, so if, if, if you'll allow me maybe a couple of minutes just to, um, to ask those questions. Um, as far as the, um, the overall budget of ten million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, um, which we currently look like we're in a shortfall of about four million that you included earlier, um, Ken, in your, um, presentation, nine hundred thousand from the development agreement payments and, um, nine hundred thousand from there that we're, we would be short, and then the three million, two hundred and thirty-five from the Spring Lake Parks, sports park phase one, correct?
Yeah, so that shortfall you were. Yeah, so that shortfall that you're referring to is under the context of a timeline that says by 2023, if we were to target construction of a pool, would we have sufficient funding in place at that time? So that's our best projection at the moment where we would be at with these funding sources by that timeframe.
And then, so, and so we're looking at other options to maintain, and you mentioned that we might borrow from one fund to maintain the timeline, correct?
Correct.
And then the other thing is, the yearly maintenance cost to maintain the pool, I believe in our initial report was over $800,000 a year, is that somewhat around the figure?
Correct. The annual maintenance and operations for a pool of this size and this configuration is around $800,000 per year, that includes staff costs for programming and whatnot. Another point that has been brought up by residents would, you know, if the pool was built, would Spring Lake have an obligation to pay towards the O and M cost for the pool? The proposal consideration is to not add that to the CFD, right? So this would alleviate the Spring Lake residents if we were to reallocate or reprioritize, I should say, the sports park funding to the pool, it actually reduces the CFD burden going forward.
And then, so that would come out of some other source somewhere in order to continue a maintenance of a pool project if it were to continue forward?
Correct. It would come from city's, you know, general fund obligations and likely from the form of a Measure J sales tax dollars or in general fund surplus.
And then, another comment that was made by residents was pertaining to the implications of the two acres from Rick Gonzales Senior Park, the implications of the sale or following through with the two acres to the district would play into that budget in any manner or not?
No, appreciate that clarification. So we are not contemplating any proceeds from a sale of that property to go towards a swimming pool project. Those funds would go back into the Spring Lake Park Fee Fund and help pay to complete the neighborhood parks.
Okay, and then my other question kind of pertaining to it is that the residents obviously are in favor of keeping parks as a priority. How would that timeline change if those parks are continued in the phases that they're initially proposed versus, how would that affect the timeline of a pool project?
Yeah, so as I mentioned in my presentation, the pool project is on a separate trajectory and under any scenario, the buildout of the neighborhood parks in Spring Lake would occur first before, you know, any funds from the Spring Lake Sports Park obligation would go towards the pool. So, you know, city, you know, staff concurs with the request from the residents that those neighborhood parks be the priority in terms of cash flow and revenues for Spring Lake Park buildout.
Thank you. And then, just to clarify again and to repeat what I heard, as far as the research tech park school timeline for another school would be, what would the neighborhood be looking at?
Timing for construction of a school in the.
Or purchase of, because I don't know that the district has purchased property, or correct, we have allocated a site, but the district doesn't necessarily?
Right, so the specific plan document, the draft that's been released identifies potential school site and is part of the final entitlement documents, including a development agreement, will stipulate an obligation for the developer to provide 10 acres in that location to the school district and identify a timeframe for them to make a decision to move forward with purchase of the site and ultimately building the school.
And that would look at a rough estimate?
Yeah, I can't even speculate, I don't do student enrollment projections and when they would have the funding and the school demand to do that, but yeah, it certainly wouldn't happen in the early phase of the project.
And I think I heard five years is what some are suggesting, is that a reasonable estimate in time?
To actually see a new school built there? Yeah, again, there's a lot that goes into that, you know, because the tech park hasn't even been approved, you know, they haven't even started construction, so I think that's a highly unrealistic timeframe.
Okay, thank you for your thorough report and I appreciate your answering my questions. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Hey, Council, we're at 8:30. So unless somebody wants to extend, make a motion to extend the meeting, ready to wrap?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do I hear, do we need a second to that? Do we need, no? Okay. All right, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.